Um, and we'll use up, up there from there to where we do the exemplary in the end. So, um, that is the expectation from the government that we will divide tier models. It's, you know, language, steps by student, steps by student, and then they, um, give dimensions, criteria that are expected to be followed. So, um, majority has to do with development learning and, um, on task behaviors. Um, the teacher must facilitate areas of things that we will be working for daily in the classroom. So, um, it's a pretty rigorous evaluation tool now that, um, we will be expecting. So, it's just quite. Sixty-five page handout. So.
Where's that one?
Sixty-five page handout. And it's expected to take approximately twelve hours for a teacher to read that.
Twelve hours of class observation. We want this? We have, we don't have a choice. We have a choice of which one. So, this is the common core. What is this? Is that here?
Pretty much the, the tool for that, yeah.
Well, they took, I mean, it sounds like, it says University of Washington Center, um, the common core. We approved this one as such with this idea?
There's basically three models, the UW cell program, the Marzano program, and the Danielson program.
They don't, they gave us three choices. They didn't say we could develop our own.
I think they did.
You could, but it would have to unit one of these. And so, we might, you know, we will be directly to all of these.
One of the benefits, uh, choosing one of the three models is there can, there's considerable professional development for both the administration side and the teacher side to implement the tool.
So, they're a carrot there.
We call it that.
Just one more example of, uh, Washington DC telling us what to do. Elections have consequences. No more from me.
Any other discussion?
Then moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Approve NACO Brazzaville Valley School District's school improvement plan for two thousand thirteen through two thousand sixteen.
I move to approve the NACO Brazzaville School District's school improvement plan for twenty thirteen through sixteen.
Second. Moved in second. Discussion. Can somebody tell me what it is?
We're obligated to add school improvement plan and we've actually, you know, had one in place in two thousand. We have raised for sure that, um, I was, you know, in charge of it. And every year, the strategies, um, goals do change, um, based on what the building improvement team comes up with. So, um, they work in their teams and it's, um, the, the goals are to improve student, um, academic, um, performance. And ours are measured through their reading, writing, math standards, and then communication goals as well. So, um, it's just all the strategies are related to that. So each year, um, we go through and update all the information and then we prepare a building, um, group, review, um, and then change the strategies.
Don't worry about what the state dictates to us.
Pardon me?
Or help to what the state dictates to us.
Right, it isn't hard about the state, because it is. And, um, but it does help to guide us and then we look at it, review it, review, um, what is the working, um, working engine to improve upon? And it does help, so.
May help us. State still dictates and runs on that. So, again, the legislatures. Karen, can I put a discussion? Is this the, the test-based thing? In other words, the, the, um, the results essentially are ultimately shown by virtue of the test results? And then plans developed according to how we're essentially, how their students do, is that?
We do, because that, that data is contained within their improvement plan, um, one of the components. And, um, showing what the, um, scores were, and I do a cohort analysis. And so, ours, I mean, our, this year's twelve graders, um, definitely what we see, the trend in our scores is that our kids don't necessarily do as well. Um, in most schools, they do very well at the elementary level and then they have tendency to decline, um, when they get into high school. Whereas ours are the opposite. Our students may not do as well at fourth grade. They increase by seventh grade and then by, um, the time they get to the tenth grade, or certainly now this year, as, as a result of Medicaid, all students have in fact passed the sections of the state assessment as, as required.
But that's sort of a result, as our conversation the other day was that we've been able to teach, uh, students how to take these tests better than perhaps the rest of the state. The other thing that you might wanna elucidate a little bit, if I, no, don't get it right. We talked about, you know, the scores that students are given. And, um, like it was like a typical four hundred, you gotta make, you gotta make four hundred points. Um, and then, you know, ask, well, how many, how many is the total? What's the, what's the max? Well, one year it's four seventy-five, other years it's different. And to, why four hundred? Where's that come from? Well, it, it, it's just an arbitrary number, but you'd be, I think, unhappy to know, that, uh, at least I was, that the, the state is grading on a curve. And so, uh, the level of knowledge, uh, you know, measured, uh, in any given year could be, uh, pretty sad or could be pretty great. You don't know. Uh, but the school or the state always looks pretty good though, because they, they dumbed down the thing enough to make it look like enough students are doing well. And it's, once again, it's, it, I don't know, it's an, it, we got an institutional problem that's bigger than our school. The, the beauty of it is, we live far enough away from Olympia that we can probably get away with a lot of things that a lot of schools can. That's a good thing. Um, not long ago, I testified up in Olympia and, um, it was nice that they didn't even know where we were essentially, but they, they listened because, uh, we're, you know, how can they not listen to someone really small? Uh, and so they did. But, um, I, this, this common core thing, this, these requirements that, that Karen is talking about, um, these other things that just, um, there, it's a bureaucratic morass that we're having to deal with. And it's a, it hurts, hurts the teachers, it hurts the students more than anyone frankly. And it's, uh, it's just too bad. We have to kind of fight this. And the hope that we can do is, is that maybe this school, uh, can figure out ways to check boxes off so that when the audits come in, we're okay, but do whatever we need to do to teach the students what we need to teach them.
Further discussion?
Then moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Go ahead, I and J first, we're gonna pause.
You receive the, you receive this information, your packet, but, uh, for the benefit of the audience, we continue to work with WASA on updates. And, uh, so this is a, a little bit about, um, what was going on here in one particular district is two board members were texting each other during the, uh, meeting. And that was a result of this policy. So, um, part of this would be refrained from doing that, which our board member did not. It became very embarrassing that one of the board members actually looked at his court scores during the meeting and they made a subpoena, or not subpoena, but a record request on that. So, uh, that's one thing, um, here. The second thing is, board members are not required to actually be physically present in board meeting. They can attend, which we have done here by, uh, by telephone. They just have to be able to hear. So, we'll do a second reading on this next time. Uh, this one here, we continue to modify our policies because of the change in the state of Washington about marijuana. And so, the green is the change here. They wanna make sure that illegal chemical substances is there. Um, non-discrimination, you've probably heard a little bit about the Boy Scouts and, uh, gay students. And so, now we're putting that actually into our policy that we will provide that equal access to, to the Boy Scouts, especially with the change is coming about. And, uh, and then this bottom piece here, I believe the WIA is helping us to do these, uh, athletic evaluations and surveys. Of us can probably speak to that a little bit. Okay, uh, next thing, this is another one. Mayor Juan and Candace, relations with the law enforcement. The staff evaluation piece, you saw the tool that we're going to be using. So, this is a policy, it's actually three pages of policy. And so, the policy and the tool that we're using have to align themselves, um, together. So, it's, it's that. And, uh, the last one is the financial reports. And I only put on here the, uh, the green piece of the, this, but WASA is wrecking, asking us to be more transparent at school board with public records requests. And so, the suggestion here is that each month or quarter, depending on how many you get, superintendent will submit to the board the public record transparency report. That includes a list of all public records requests received by the district. Absuspression and in an effort to achieve full transparency to the public record requests that we receive and to which it provides responses, the board superintendent posts a report on its website. Now, here, here, here's why this particular, uh, report came out. We have two school districts in the state of Oregon that are currently spending thousands and thousands of dollars on public records requests because there's things we can't release, something we can't release. There are a lot of things that go into that. So, when we get a public records request, the first thing we do is we, we have to call, we get ahold of an attorney to help guide us on that. And, uh, the attorney that we use, they're pretty close with three hundred bucks an hour. Fortunately for our school district, that comes under our plan for insurance. What they wanna do is they, they are suggesting to the board, we'll get these, how much money are the office people spending? Marilyn and I in particular gathering this, how much does the attorney's cost? And then using it as a budgetary item, but also showing the community what it is that we're spending. Recently, we had one that was, uh, well over fifteen thousand all. It adds up very, very quickly. Okay, so that's first reading on those. I don't know if there are any other questions on those. Okay. Thank you. Um, I'm K. I'm new school board meeting from June eighteenth through June twelve. This is an action item.
I must have.
It's a school board meeting from June eighteen through twelve.
Second.
Then. Moved in second. All those, or, discussion question?
Why, why would we need to?
I make the request.
You made the?
I make the request. So, the board can either allow that or not. Totally up to the board. Further discussion? Then moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I was who made her say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Business office report.
Okay, so, uh, start out with enrollment for month of April. Uh, the K plus school pretty flat at two hundred and sixty-one, stayed that way the last several months. Uh, CBA, uh, in April was two hundred and ninety-one FTE. On point to May, uh, the public school stayed flat, yeah, at two hundred and sixty-one, but the CBA enrollment dropped by fifteen FTE. The reason that is, because we have many students that are wrapping up their, their course years. And because of the increased, uh, you know, guidance from the state overall, you have to be really careful to de-enroll them as, or adjust their FTE as they finish courses. And so, it was entirely expected, expected, you know, this time of the year that that would be dropping. Actually graduate, uh, three students, but we just signed their diplomas today. Um, will be graduating, um, in the next couple of weeks. Um, we ended the month of April, our ending fund cash reserve at about four hundred seventy-nine thousand dollars. Um, a little bit higher than, than I had anticipated, but, and again, I'm pretty conservative in calculating that. Um, angry to end the year strong. Um, the big question is the state legislature. I heard today, and, you know, my seven years as a business manager, never heard this, they're looking at not wrapping up until July. Um, that's unheard of, at least in my experience. Um, state law requires us to have a budget prepared and adopted by the board in July. Uh, we can't do that until we have the OSPI tool, um, to do the budget. It's all on the statewide system. And until the legislature wraps up their session and the government, the governor signs the budget, we can't, we can't do that. And so, I don't know if that's gonna happen or not. That's hearsay as far as I'm concerned. Um, no one knows what's gonna happen, but the legislature is facing a, uh, difficult time, uh, reconciling the two different, uh, uh, sides of the aisle. And who knows what will happen there? Um, so that's just something to be aware of. Um, as far as, uh, other, uh, I would remind the board that, uh, this Thursday, we're gonna have our, our accreditation, school accreditation outside review team. Um, about every seven or eight years, the school, uh, elects to maintain its accreditation. And what that involves is, uh, some work that we do here locally at the school that culminates with a outside review team of approximately eight educators from all over the place, uh, basically Southwest Washington. And they'll be here all day on Thursday, um, interviewing staff, talking to staff, observing classrooms, um, students, et cetera. And then they're going to, uh, be working up of a set of guiding questions that, that the staff have developed and will be, uh, giving us feedback, uh, both commendations and recommend, recommendations on those guiding questions. So, that will be happening on Thursday. That's all I have for the report.
All right.
Thank you. Yeah.
Uh, I understand, you know, looking at that budget, I, I can see, look back, there was a hundred and ten thousand. So, it's perhaps has become more than the other extra, that we jumped two hundred and twenty thousand. I don't, all the years that I've been on the board, I've never seen the jump in one month that big.
Well, it does happen. Um, the, uh, the way the state apportionment is, is allotted is that the percentage has changed depending on what month you're in. Um, uh, people in the audience probably noticed that their taxes were due in April. And so, uh, as the taxes are collected, they're at least a third out, those revenues do come into the district in that month. Um, and so, it, it's very common, in fact, if you have a levy, it's always common to, to see a bump in April and May. And it'll start to taper off in June. Um, and then again, it will happen in the fall when the second half is collected. The other, uh, aspect there, Gilbert, is, uh, levy equalization. Uh, this school district receives approximately three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars a year in levy equalization monies. Those are monies that we collect from the state as, uh, the subsidy, only if we have a levy in place. And those are also distributed over certain months, certain percentages. April happens to be one of those months if we got a, we get a windfall from levy equalization. And so, those two things particularly, um, combined to, to boost our reserves and, and I expect that to happen. Just don't know, you know, the exact timing when it does, so.
I know they talked about legislative last year, of doing away with any levy equalization.
Well, yeah.
But I didn't know whether it would happen or did not.
No, it did not happen. It didn't change, uh, a bit, um, thankfully for us. And hopefully that they leave alone again, so.
Okay, that's true, my question.
Thank you. Karen, move it up.
So, quickly, um, actually today's the moment where three, two has dropped a little bit. We discussed some of the reasons, um, why at last time, so we'll go into that. Things have been pretty quiet around the camp lately, uh, mostly just because we're preparing for state testing, which will happen first week of June. And it's going to state the end of course biology and end of course math exam. So, I've been buckling down, getting ready for those. Last day of summer school is June fourteenth, which was, excuse me, regular school, two fourteenth, then summer school starts June seventeenth. We saw several names on the list. Let's talk about electricity. Why not? It's Einstein, Mrs. Einstein on the top there. Thank you, Claudia. Uh, she lives out in D for her and I, I thought it was the water, but if you take a look, she has her hand on electricity machine. And it was pretty neat because the kids made a doohickey chain and then we do it getting in the way, shocking each other. And so, her hair, you know, to be better in real life, it's just straight up. And that arc you see between the two thumbs there is an electric current, small, slow electric current, slightly. Um, they do say that shock therapy does have some edible benefits, but we try to limit that, um, as much as possible. But they, I heard this screaming and thumping around in the room and I have to go check this out. Well, they were basically shocking each other. You know, they were kinda jumping around and it's funny for the group that I work with, how scared they are of just little things like, you know, shocks and spiders, bugs, um, bats. We had a bat that was in there the other day and that was another adventure I won't go into, but, um, because like I said, I did burrow at home, uh, a little bit. Um, so that's all we've been working on, we're just getting ready for testing right now.
Have we got our portion from the state?
Not full deal deal, I don't know.
Was three thousand dollars, about three or four hundred short. Is that the one we're talking about?
Yeah.
From, uh... Karen?
Oh, okay, so last night, um, some of the men had the opportunity to attend the middle school, high school band performances for concert and it was absolutely amazing. It was so entertaining. There was such a, um, diverse, um, group of, um, activities. And they, they had the, um, the rivas and the reggae band. For the first time, we had, um, this is great, actually a part of middle school band that has never happened. And we have such a talented, talented group of, of monsters in sixth, sixth grade musically that this is for sure, it's gonna really pull back. And then we received a xylophone, that was a donation from a former NACO grad, the one that gave it back in the fifties. And, um, so we donated those and the kids did an absolute amazing job on those. I, I couldn't pick one of these up, I apologize on that, but they did a phenomenal job. And so, David, just, you know, kudos to Mr. Kim. He does an outstanding job with our, our music program. And we have incredible amount of talent in this community. And tomorrow night is the sunset, well, we have the elementary students perform. So, no worries with that. We do have, um, numbers up, we actually have six new students in the last few weeks. Uh, one family brought in four and there are three more at home. A new family that moved into Los Angeles and then we took in a new student la, um, last Friday and another one on Monday. So, we got the six new ones. So, our numbers are growing up, it's gonna be good, but, you know, it's okay, it's all good. Um, also, we had kindergarten roundup, uh, last Tuesday and we had nineteen kindergarten students, um, that will be enrolled for next fall. But that was only a part of them. There were about five families that were unable to attend. And there are also others out there that I'm hearing we don't have in yet. So, I'm hearing upwards of thirty, we just can't seem to find where those actual ones are. But we're hearing that the numbers are working up for these two hundred, uh, children, so numbers are good. And then we did talk about the, um, emerging program and that's another thing. I was, went to a mandatory, um, meeting back in Washington DC, it was a workshop, um, two weeks ago. And this is for the TCLP, the Teachers of Critical Energy Program, which is funded by the grant through the State Department in Washington DC. We were one of sixteen schools in the country to receive this grant. And actually only one of twelve, because four schools, um, Iowa, a school in Iowa, Arizona, Wisconsin, and Palo Alto were renewed for a second year. So, we were actually one of twelve schools in the country to receive this, um, grant. And so, William Heaton, who personally goes to, um, China and interviews for these teachers, indicated that, um, this was certainly, um, an honor. And, uh, the schools, those of us administrators who were present, he said, you have absolutely no idea how lucky you are to even receive this grant. So, they also have teachers from, um, Egypt that, who teach Arabic, because those are the two critical languages, Mandarin and, and they're, and they want to maintain those relationships with those countries and, um, so they bring those programs to us. Um, we have testing, also taking place the first week of June. We completed our elementary testing last week with ITDS in first and second grade. So, our testing is all completed. We will do the EOCs June third, fourth, fifth. And, um, graduation on the eighth of June. Oh, evening X ones, May twenty-ninth. So, they're fighting to attend that, but it's an exciting evening, we'll be decked nice and honor students for no tensions. It's not to happen.
Thank you.
Uh, a couple of things here. We have a public record request and, uh, so although our policy isn't in place, I just wanted to share what we'll do at the public record request room. When it does, uh, come in and we go down, there's a list of nine things that are requested in there. And so, if they're fairly simple, we don't contact anybody, but, uh, the last thing, a request here, then it costs a significant amount of money. And so, we automatically contact, uh, Don Ossman, the attorney, who applies us on what can be released and what can't be released. So, for example, we get down in, uh, get down into here where the teacher union survey, there's question whether that can be released, although the teacher sent that to the board and handed that in a box to the administrators. There's question of what, what that does. And so, uh, they rule on that and then Ossman, the court, will rule on that. So, uh, the attorney asks us, we send it to him and then he sets that out. So, what we will do is we continue to get public records requests, we'll share those and then we'll put the monies that we have into them. A public record request from this, ten cents a copy. But it's now, they're asking to, again, the public records transparency is saying, put in the number of hours that you're working, attorney's fees, so that people can, uh, people can see that.
Do you know about how much this is gonna cost us in attorney fees?
Uh, this one right here, well, we're well over a thousand dollar right now. Second one, uh, school board election. I think all of our candidates, uh, almost all are right here tonight. We have Art Hyland up on the board. I've seen Josh, Josh, can I raise your hands, I'm glad I can see you. Josh back there. Alan Levitz, uh, who is not here, uh, tonight, but Lev is here over here, and he mentioned himself beginning. And then we have Steve Gacke back here, uh, running in oppose. The election is November fifth. The reason this is such an early date on this, uh, was because if there, if there's more than two candidates, they have the runoff election in August. And so, there is no, there is no more than two candidates, so this will just go on to the, the November election. As we look ahead, uh, Mr. Dartor and Mr. Padia, they're terms in on November thirtieth, or November, uh, this year, have chosen not to run for reelection. And Mr. Popper and Mr. Fletcher, they have two more years and their ends on, uh, November, uh, twenty-fifteen. And then last thing I just wanted to share, you can go on our Facebook page to, uh, get this. But as you know, we had a tragic incident in our, in our community here just over a week ago and it's, things are turning out well, but, uh, this was something that our kids did. And since I only have this for speakers, I want to, uh, to share this. Um, before I came down to the date, it had, uh, it was three, three clips short of two thousand hits on it. So, it really been, been out there a little bit.
One, two, three.
So, just a nice way to, to wish the schools the best, to keep enjoying, uh, doing that. And you, you've noticed a lot of purple around, and that's in recognition of Jesse and hoping that she can recover and be back home soon. Okay, that's my report.
All right. Item four, board members' reports, future, and again, item. This time, an entertaining motion to adjourn. Move to Luger. Second, please.
Second, please. Then moved in second, all those in favor say aye. Motion carries.